This meeting of the Committee of the Whole for the Rolling Meadows City Council is hereby called to order. There are four items on the regular agenda, but there are also four items that are in for closed session. Two of those items do not require any discussion, as nothing has transpired since the last closed session. That's Items Three and Four under the Closed Session section for Local 150 and AFSMI Council 31. Therefore, the Chair asks unanimous consent to strike Items Three and Four from the Closed Session-only portion of the agenda. Is there any objection to doing so? Hearing no objection, it is so ordered that Items Three and Four are struck from the list, and there are only two Closed Session items remaining. So Closed Session, of course, never happens until Open Session is done. We have four items of Open Session this evening. The first one concerns the Islamic Society of the Northwest Suburbs. And so the presentation that you can see, the PowerPoint, ready and set to go for, I believe we'll start with, Hal, is that going to be you who kicks this off?
Yes.
Barry, is there a staff introduction, or do we just go straight to them?
Just go straight to them, because we have in the packet.
All right. Then Mr. Frank, the microphone is yours, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Rooney, members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Hal Frank. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Melzer, Bertil, and Stell. My office is at 1515 East Woodfield Road in Schaumburg. And I'm very pleased to be before you at this committee meeting on behalf of the Islamic Society of the Northwest Suburbs of Chicago. First, I would like to thank the mayor and the alderman for giving us this opportunity. And I want to say right from the get-go that while we have a lot of supporters here, as I just told the mayor, we only have 10 people that want to speak, and some of them have very brief statements to make. So as you probably are aware, the Islamic Society has filed a formal application for the consideration of a text amendment and a special use to allow for their relocation from their existing facility at 3950 Industrial Avenue to the property that's now under contract to them at 1200 Hicks Road. It's the building right behind them, the parking lot that they've been using, and you'll hear about have the continued right to use. We understand this is a committee meeting. We're not looking, you know, for any formal vote tonight. We're hoping to get feedback from all of you. Obviously, we're hoping to get some positive statements before we go to the Plan Commission. But the main purpose for tonight is just for us to tell you our story and why we think this is a great proposal for Rolling Meadows. And I want to apologize, there was a little misunderstanding about the last meeting when you talked about at the manufacturing district. I was not at that meeting. And there was a little confusion as to whether this presentation was supposed to be made by us at that night, and that's why you didn't hear it that night. And I know you talked about this kind of a use in the manufacturing district on October 20th, I think it was. But like I said, we were a little bit confused, and therefore we asked for, and again, the mayor, we appreciate the fact that you've given us this opportunity, notwithstanding the discussion that you had on October 20th. So with that, if I could present, begin our presentation. And you have received, I know, the booklet that we put together. Some of this is in that booklet, some of it is not. But the Islamic Society of the Northwest Suburbs is a very unique religious organization and community. This is their mission statement, to provide a community environment for families to come together with a shared interest to pray, learn, and serve where our youth can cultivate God consciousness, develop good habits, become law-abiding citizens, and contributing members of society. I think this mission statement would apply to any religious organization that we'd want to have in our town. But I wanted to share this with you or highlight this, because they are more than just a religious organization, as you'll hear this evening. Some quick background, again, I know a lot of you know this already, but the ISNS was established here almost 30 years ago, over 30 years ago, 1984. It is a tax-exempt religious organization. In 1986, it acquired the first premises here in Rolling Meadows at 3980 Industrial Drive. That was a 5,000-square-foot facility, which they still own, but it's actually, as you'll hear in a bit, it's actually under contract now to be sold. And it's been off the tax rolls, it'll be going back onto the tax rolls. In 2005, this council approved a special use to allow them to move to the larger facility that they've been in since 2005 at 3950 Industrial Drive. As you know, that's got one point of ingress and egress, a two-lane driveway that is shared with the business to the west. It's 15,000 square feet. It was a condition, as I'm going to highlight in a second, it was a condition of the city ordinance that approved this, that the ISNS get a lease to use parking in the immediate vicinity, which they continue, they got, and they continue to have. This site, as you'll hear from some of the people that are going to speak this evening, is a great site for them because of its unique location. It's uniquely situated near Route 53 and Northwest Highway. So it's very easy for people who come during the week and on weekends to come in off the highway. Many of the members, as you'll hear tonight, are actually residents of Rolling Meadows. But many employees come from all over the Northwest suburbs, and other members come from all over the Northwest suburbs. And the easy on and off, so to speak, at 53 is critical to them. Approximately 200 families, 300 individuals currently are members. The school attendance, Sunday school attendance, has grown from 100 to 175 students from when they first opened. And their busiest time is during Friday prayers. There are two different services. One is at 115 to 140, and the other is at 215 to 240. They are known as the Islamic Society of the Northwest Suburbs. As you can see, they draw from all over the area. I won't call these, no, I won't repeat all these. You can see how many communities are, these are just the communities, by the way, for which you receive letters in that packet. But they draw from all over. Again, this sheet is in your, this list of services provided is in the booklet you receive, driver safety classes, environmental stewardship classes, after-school assistance, funeral services, family counseling, computer literacy, bookstores, extracurricular activities. There's a center for senior citizens, social services, a clinic, and a food pantry. So obviously, there's a lot that's being done to serve the community. And this is not just the society's community, it's the whole community of the area. The existing facility, as all of you know, was approved in July of 2004 by the adoption of two ordinances. One amended the manufacturing district to allow for special uses in the M1 district. And then immediately thereafter, the city adopted an ordinance that allowed for the establishment of the current use at 3950 Industrial Drive. As you know or may recall, that ordinance required that 167 parking spaces be provided. There are actually only 58 spaces on-site, which is why they then, the society then turned around in July of that year, and they entered into a lease with the owner of the 1200 Hicks Road property to permit parking on 327 of the spaces that are immediately contiguous to the property. I have a picture in an aerial that will locate that for you better. The actual parking lot, I believe, holds over 500 cars, or approximately 500 cars. A year later, more or less, they entered into a new lease with the property owner. And last year, they actually exercised the right they had to extend the lease on the parking spaces, and that lease runs till 2021. In the ordinance that granted the special use, I think it's important to note that the city made, the city council made some very specific findings. Those findings were that the ISNS use of the property is necessary or desirable to provide a service which is in the interest of the public convenience, and that the ISNS use of the property will not, under the circumstances and evidence of the case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of people working in the vicinity. A couple of months later, September of 2004, the city adopted ordinance number 0452, which again amended the zoning ordinance provisions for the M1 district. And with this ordinance, the city council eliminated the opportunity to obtain a special use for religious assembly uses. In that ordinance, again, two months later, the city council expressed these opinions, that these types of uses are tax-exempt, remove the property from the commercial tax base, that opportunities for uses that generate other types of governmental income, like sales taxes, are reduced, employment opportunities are reduced, daytime peak occupancy of a place of group assembly is inconsistent with the activities of the surrounding manufacturing uses, a manufacturing area and its uses create an inappropriate environment for pedestrians, and particularly children, and is detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and that there are other places in the city where these types of uses can be located. Now, since then, of course, we've had 10 years of experience, and for the reasons that we're going to go through, I'm going to go through shortly, we think all of these can be addressed, and that they are addressed by the current proposal that is going to be heard by the Plan Commission. So here again is that aerial that I was talking about. You can see in the lower left-hand corner, the existing 3950 facility. You see the parking lot that's highlighted in the blue boundary, and then you see the proposed relocation to the 1200 Hicks Road property. The reason I think this is an important picture of what is going on here is because this is not a proposal of somebody that's seeking to establish a use in your manufacturing district for the first time. This is a use that's been in this location for, like I said, over 30 years. In this particular location, for the past 10 years, but on Industrial Drive for 30 years. So as the community has grown, they have, you know, tried to grow and stay in the same location for the reasons mentioned. Now, you know, I've mentioned to others in prior conversations that, you know, we are not, from a land use standpoint, you're always questioning whether it's a compatible use and whether what's been established is consistent with the trend of development. Those are kind of buzzwords in the world of zoning. And I would respectfully submit to you that with the INS being in the heart of the district, for as long as it's been, with the Harvest Bible Chapel being established up to the northeast, I guess it is, and then the Shorewood Bible Church being situated immediately to the south at Euclid and Hicks, I think from a land use standpoint, it's pretty fair to say that this type of use has existed without problem in this area, not just the ISNS, but these other two places of worship. Now, I'm preempting what I know some of you might say, which is the fact that the INS is zoned in the M1 manufacturing district, while the Harvest Bible Chapel is zoned in a different zoning district, the C2 General Commercial Services District, and, which is true for the, actually, I think Shorewood Bible Church, this is wrong, I think it's a C1 commercial district. But those are both zoned in the commercial district. But I think what's important to note is all three of these uses are located in the Northwest Industrial Park, which is identified in your comprehensive plan. I know there was a comment made in the memo from the city manager about the 2006 comprehensive plan. So I think it should be understood that this is what your comprehensive plan identifies as the Northwest Industrial Park. And it expands into those areas that are zoned commercial. It doesn't just focus on the manufacturing district. And I think it's rather interesting that in your comprehensive plan, it specifically identifies churches as activity generators for the Northwest Industrial Park. This again is a point that we've made on prior occasions when we've talked to some of you offline, that this use brings so many people into the area that it's good for your local businesses. And I think it's interesting, if not ironic, that your own comprehensive plan recognizes that. So now, if I can, very quickly, I'm going to address those items that were identified as, that I identified above as the opinions that the council had back in 2004, when they again amended the text of the manufacturing, the M1 district, to remove places of worship as special uses. Number one, if you recall, was the concern about loss of revenue. So we've shared with you a projection. This again is a unique situation, because this is not someone who's coming in and saying, "We want to acquire a property and take it off the tax roll, period." This is a very unique applicant here, because they already own two pieces of property that are in the area, which are off the tax rolls, which would go back on the tax rolls. So you really have to do a net analysis of what's being lost here. And as we've said here, the net loss to all taxing jurisdictions, we estimate, by taking 1200 Hicks off the tax roll, but putting the other two properties back on the tax roll, is only $31,000 a year. And I don't know what percentage of the tax bills around here are the city's, but I think it's usually like 10% to 12% or something like that. So, and as I said, the 3890 building is actually already under contract. It's going to close, hopefully, by the end of the year. So we're really not talking major fiscal impact here to the city. And even if you said, you know, "Well, we shouldn't suffer any fiscal impact," you know, we've indicated to others in the city, and other churches have done this in other communities where they've gone in, you know, we're not adverse to the concept of a payment in lieu of taxes to cover a shortfall in return for getting special police traffic regulation services on Fridays, which I think, I don't know how they're getting paid or if they get paid, but, you know, I was here on Sunday, and I saw that was exactly what was going on down the street at the Harvest Bible Chapel. So I don't know if that's just covered by the city, or if you get reimbursed for that. But as I said, we would not be adverse to a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, if that were an issue for you. In addition, as we said, we bring people into the area, which supports your local businesses, that sales taxes, there's gas stations here, motor fuel taxes. And as you'll hear one of the members of the society talk about later, we think people move here, and it results in, you know, stabilizing the residential base and adding, taking houses which may not have been, that may have been vacant, and maybe the taxes have been reduced. People are moving, and have moved into the community, to be close to the mosque. One of the other concerns or opinions that was expressed back in 2004 was the extent to which this use would be, you know, consistent with the uses around the property. And we have submitted, a draft, we're still finalizing trying to respond to some questions that Valerie Danner has asked, but we have submitted a traffic report. And I'm not going to run through all of these right now, but if you run, if you do analyze this, you'll see that by moving the use from Industrial Avenue to Hicks Road, you actually create a much better traffic pattern all the way around, not just for the ISNS, but also for the businesses in the area. Remember, as I said at the beginning, right now, there's a shared two-lane drive. Everybody comes in and out, there's long delays when people are leaving, there's backups, as I understand it, on Industrial Avenue, which is an inconvenience to other businesses on Industrial Avenue on Fridays. And there's delays for people that are now leaving and trying to get back to work after coming to pray. All of that would be improved by moving the access point to Hicks Road. And also, the facility will actually generate less traffic than the previous use that was on the property, and any other permitted uses that could go in as a matter of rights. So as is said at the bottom of this slide, from a traffic standpoint, this will actually have a lesser impact on area roadways than what was there and what could go there. So we're not sure that this, the statement that it would be inconsistent with what's there is necessarily supported from a traffic standpoint. I think all of these I more or less touched upon. So now, just, I wanted to share with you, the specific application that we have before you is to do another text amendment to the M1 district. And we've put it out in the alternative. Either to do what you once did, which is to generally say, "You can come in for a special use for this type of use." And obviously, when it's a special use, it means you have to prove up that there's a community need for this use in this location. And I mean, that's the essence of a special use. But we've also suggested you could do an alternative, in the alternative, a more limited amendment, and this is done in many, many municipalities, where we would say you would authorize a special use in the M1 district for a use that was already existing on the date that you adopt that ordinance, as long as they are relocating to add a piece of land within a defined period of time which is contiguous. I know it sounds very unique or special to them, but this is a way that municipalities frequently do accommodate the requests of a petitioner like this without necessarily opening up a Pandora's box for themselves within the zoning classification. We obviously could live with either way. And then regardless of which way, if the city council were willing to do this, we would ultimately need to have the special use that that would authorize. So we've applied for the special use as well. One of the questions that's been raised is, you know, the extent to which other municipalities have taken this approach. And so what I've shared with you up here, we've done our research. Hoffman Estates, Schaumburg, Northbrook, Aurora, Neboville are just some of the municipalities who've recognized that actually this type of use is an appropriate use in this type of district. And that's really more the conventional thinking these days. And the reason is this, traffic and parking. As all of you know, the way our country was born and developed, everybody walked to church, everybody walked to school. And that's why in almost every municipality, if not every municipality in the Chicago metro area, schools and churches are permitted uses in the residential districts, because everybody used to walk to these facilities. Well, of course, nowadays, when they want to expand, or grow, or change, or do something, and I've worked on many of them, there's nothing more controversial in a residential neighborhood, you know, than a church or a school, private school in particular, with the drop-offs, the pickup, the parking, et cetera. A lot of communities have recognized that, and they've actually said, "This is a great use in this type of a district, because the traffic comes and goes more often than not when these uses are shut down. No interference with neighborhoods." At this point, I'd like to turn the floor over to the president of the association, if I could do that, and then he's going to address you first, mayor, and then he's going to go right through that list, or you can read off from that list. We're going to jump to that.
Certainly, either way would be just fine, sir. Mr. Khan, welcome.
Thank you. In the name of God, the most beneficent, the most merciful, dear honorable mayor, aldermen, and the city official, my name is Dawud Khan. I'm the current president of ISNS. I live at 2011 North Kennicott in Arlington Heights. I've been working for 25 years for Department of Defense at Northrop Grumman in Rolling Meadows. First and foremost, I would like to thank the city of Rolling Meadows for having ISNS exist here for the past 30 years. One part of ISNS I would like to touch upon tonight is its location and the convenience it provides to the Muslim workers in the Rolling Meadows and the surrounding suburbs. Let me explain why this is important. One of the religious obligations for Muslims is to be able to perform their Friday prayers in congregation and listen to a sermon. This is equivalent of a Sunday Mass. This occurs every Friday from 12:00 to 3:30 p.m. in the afternoon. During this time, majority of the Muslims are at work, and the Friday prayer happens to be during their lunch hour. ISNS provides a most convenient location for them because it is close proximity to their work. This is also very convenient to me, along with many other Muslims who work at Northrop, because we can walk to ISNS and offer our prayers not only on Friday, but practically every day. The location of ISNS is also very convenient to many other Muslims who work in the surrounding suburbs because of quick access to Route 53, and Route 53 making it a quick comeback within 10 or five, five to 10 minutes back to work. Our move to 1200 Hicks Road will also resolve two issues we have. First, it will secure the parking requirement from leasing to owning. This will give ISNS the peace of mind to call Rolling Meadows their permanent home. Second, it will give us the space we need during the month of Ramadan. As you know, in the past, we had put up a tent for the month of Ramadan. We had three years of zoning amendment for the tent, which expired this year. This move will eliminate the tent requirement and provide a permanent solution. I also wanted to talk about, a little bit about that slide that's up there is, it's that we have looked at many other parcels in the area. It wasn't just this, for the past three years, we've been looking, because we knew that our lease is going to be coming up due, and if our lease is over, we would have to move. So we looked at several parcels, and the board had decided that we didn't want to move within three to five miles from where we are currently. And it should be that we could afford it, it should be affordable, and it should have enough land, at least a minimum of five acres. So majority of the parcels that we looked So, majority of the parcels that we looked at, it didn't meet the criteria. So, fortunately, you know, L3 put up their parcel up for several. So, tonight, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for giving us the opportunity to hear our request, that you will consider our request for approval with an open mind. Thank you very much, I'll have the next speaker.
Yes, Mr. Khan, Mr. Zubair Khan.
Hello, thank you Mayor Rooney and members of the city council. My name is Zubair Khan, no relation, but I'm thirty-nine years old. I'm a resident of Hoffman Estates and I have my law practice in Schaumburg. I'm currently also a board member of District fifteen, which includes many elementary and junior high schools in the Rolling Meadows area. I've been regularly attending ISNS since I was ten years old, actually. And it's always been a crucial part of my life. In addition to religious services, ISNS, I would say, has provided the foundation of who I am today, both, you know, ethically, morally, professionally and socially. I think I've benefited and everybody here has benefited from what ISNS has brought to the table all these years. You know, at ISNS, I feel specifically I've learned the value of volunteerism. I think that's one thing I would, I would hone in on, that's really become a part of my life. You know, I've volunteered at ISNS for many years. Eventually, as I, as I grew, I grew older, you know, it spurred in me the desire to volunteer and fight for the larger community here in the northwest suburbs. And I think the progressive values that we've learned at ISNS over the years, you know, being a responsible citizen, not only as a, as a worshiper, but more importantly, as a responsible citizen of our country, of our specific community, of our neighborhood. And that includes giving back to the less fortunate. And I think that's really directly led to my involvement in, in the, in the school district, among other things. You know, to understand that we need to help all of the kids, all the members of this community and particularly those whose needs are not being met perhaps with their family and just have unfortunate circumstances. You know, I think one thing I've learned as, as a board member on District fifteen is that for kids in their public schools, in order for kids to succeed in the classroom, it really does require the, the existence of other institutions that kind of lend a hand. Sometimes those are social institutions, sometimes those are community services. And sometimes, you know, you have health clinics and community colleges. The whole concept of a community is all these things coming together. And a part of that puzzle is the religious institutions. And I think that's what ISNS is, more than a mosque, it's a, it's a community center. And, you know, it's an institution of Rolling Meadows. You know, being here for more than thirty years, it's part of Rolling Meadows. And I think that what it does is it provides for the overall prosperity of this community. I mean, like, like the slides have described, we have health clinics, educational for general life skills, interfaith, community dialogue happens all the time. And we work hand in hand with other figures in Rolling Meadows and other members of this community. I think that these experiences allow our children, so now, my children, to be an effective member of the community at large. They're no longer, you know, kind of sometimes perceived as outsiders, they are now just a piece of the puzzle, piece of the larger puzzle of Rolling Meadows. And I think ISNS makes that possible or lends a hand to make that possible. And, you know, just to conclude, really, you know, from the heart, I think ISNS has meant a lot to me over the years. I have three kids now, they're nine, seven and three years old. And they, they also now attend ISNS for various things. It's crazy because my son is the same age that I am when I first went to this mosque. So, you really see how this is now having a generational effect. And I really want the same experience for him that I had, you know, and I want him to give back to the community when he gets older. Not, not just the mosque itself, but to the larger northwest suburbs and, and, you know, and Rolling Meadows specifically. I think Rolling Meadows is a great community. I, I learned a little bit more about Rolling Meadows, actually, through this, the recent election I was in and got to meet, you know, door to door. It's a great community with so many different type of people. And I think ISNS is a part of it. I'm happy that we, we didn't look at those other, other locations because this is, you know, all these roads are now part, when people think they're going to the mosque, they're thinking industrial drive. You know, they're not thinking some other place. I mean, it sounds, it sounds a little funny because, you know, industrial drive, you know, it doesn't seem like a home, you know, like an actual residential place, but it is. And so, I really hope that this council and, you know, considers our application and allows us to continue the legacy. Thank you.
Then the next speaker would be Ms. Farina Khan.
Another Khan, also no relation. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Farina Khan and I live about ten minutes away from ISNS. I'm a CPA, I work full-time, as does my husband. And in our free time, we enjoy taking our children to ISNS. I actually migrated here from England a little over twenty years ago. I miss my family greatly. ISNS has actually taken the place of my family here. We celebrate together when someone has a child or a graduation or a wedding. And we support each other during times of sickness or if someone has lost a loved one. We realize that ISNS being so close to us, it is so convenient for us to get there. As again, I'm, I'm only in Lake Zurich, which is only ten minutes away. We are raising four boys between the ages of eight and twenty. It's a blessing that a couple of them can drive themselves now and they do enjoy going there as often as possible. During the summer months, they actually go there almost every day. And that gives us peace of mind because we know where they are, we know who they're with. And it keeps them out of trouble, basically. And while they're there, they do also run out often for pizza, for bagels, for donuts as they get hungry. So, they are kind of supporting the local merchants a little bit as they go. And ISNS is not just a building, it's not just bricks and mortar. It is definitely, as the other speakers have said so far, it's a social place for our children to be comfortable. They have learnt a lot of great things by being with other members of the community. They, they have been able to network with other professionals within the community and take advantage of job sharing and volunteering, job shadowing, I mean. Job shadowing and volunteering for the people who've been kind enough to give them the opportunity for that. The children of ISNS have planted trees, they have delivered food, clothing to the needy, and they're learning about respecting their neighbors and their surroundings. We try our best to raise the kids in the best possible way we can to become responsible citizens. And none of this would have been possible if we were not so close to this center. It means a lot to us. I sincerely hope you will support us by approving the zoning request and our children will truly appreciate it if they can continue visiting the center within Rolling Meadows, familiar grounds to them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next person on the list then would be Mr. Umar Hussein.
Good evening. My name is Umar Hussein. I have, I'm a pre-medical student at University of Illinois at Chicago. I have been a resident of Rolling Meadows for the past eight years now, living right off the intersection of Rowling and Euclid. The location of the mosque is very convenient for my family, friends and I. This convenient location was actually one of the driving factors as to why we moved out to Rolling Meadows eight years ago. As a twenty-one-year-old, I offer a different perspective because I offered childhood, the youth, and now the adulthood, going into adulthood. Of course, growing up, playing basketball, attending Sunday School, volunteering, all those kind of stuff that ISNS offers has made my childhood something really special. However, today, I would really, really like to focus and emphasize, keen on in this idea that ISNS is not just a place of worship. ISNS continues to reach out to communities everywhere and makes a positive impact socially, more important socially, to communities like Arlington Heights, Rolling Meadows, Palatine, Bartlett, Barrington and so much more. As I enter adulthood with many of my friends, ISNS has reminded me the importance of brotherhood and community. Throughout its tenure, the mosque has constantly taught many of its members to grow. It has, it has molded us into individuals that are constantly thriving to give back and make the community around us a little better. I can personally vouch for that because of ISNS, the foundational concept that it has instilled in me. My sisters and I have gone out to make our, our community a lot better. Rolling Meadows, in fact, in the past, we have gotten involved with the Rolling Meadows Community Center, the ice rink here at Rolling Meadows, NSWRA, which is located in Arlington Heights that helps with specialized kids, specialized adults. Those kind of things were instilled into us because of the sense of community, giving back because of that, growing up in ISNS. So, my point being, over the past few years, ISNS has made a tremendous, tremendous effort to reach out to communities and to unite people. That's what, that, that's what is really key. So, if ISNS closes its doors, it causes a depressing halt to the years of progression that they have constantly made. And it will surely negatively, I, I repeat, negatively impact not just this Rolling Meadows community, but communities everywhere. And I would like to thank the council this evening and would humbly request the council to please consider our request. Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the time. The next person would be Ms. Batul Fatima.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Batul Fatima and I'm a resident of Palatine for the past nine years. One of the major criteria for my home purchase here in Palatine was this very close proximity to the mosque. I have four kids, ranging in age from kindergarten to sophomore, five-year-old to fourteen-year-old. They attend schools right here in District fifteen and District two-eleven. The mosque is very integral part of my family. We are here weeknights doing various activities, men and my kids. My five-year-olds and my twelve-year-old boy comes to ISNS for Quranic studies after their regular school. My fourteen-year-old son comes here for ACT preparation classes as well as participating in athletic activities, social gatherings with his friends from Sunday Schools and other activities that he has. On weekends, we come here as a family for learning, forming lasting relationships, bonding with the community and volunteering in any way we can to make a positive impact on the community. We spend around ten to twelve hours every week here at the mosque and the location as we have it currently is very conducive to being deeply involved in the activities while integrating our beliefs and faith and providing community service. Professionally, I work at Catamaran in Schaumburg as a product manager. Due to the proximity of this location to major corporations, I personally know a number of my colleagues and employees from Morolla, Zurich and other businesses around the area that come to the mosque for Friday prayers. Due to the current parking and traffic situation, we have significant delays returning back to work. Having a new building with the improved flow of traffic from Hicks will greatly alleviate this problem. And we will be able to return to work on our Fridays on time. So, I thank the village council and the mayor for giving us this opportunity to speak and I sincerely appeal to the Rolling Meadows City Council to vote in favor of the zoning for the mosque. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fatima, and I apologize for not knowing the pronunciation before of your last name, but now that I do, I hope I said it right the second time. The next person would be Mr. Tabrez Ahmed.
Good evening, Mayor Rooney, members of the city council. My name is Tabrez Ahmed and I live at twelve eighty-four South Vermont Street in Palatine and have my own accounting firm. I've been associated with ISNS for the past twenty years and I've been a graduate of their Sunday School program. When me and my family were looking to purchase our house in two thousand and six, one of the deciding factors was the proximity to the mosque. Currently, my house is less than one mile from the mosque. Luckily, my accounting firm is less than five minutes from the mosque as well. Having an office this close to the mosque allows my employees, three of whom are Muslims plus myself, the ability to make the afternoon prayers at the mosque on a daily basis. This is a huge convenience to myself and my employees. Therefore, I humbly request you to support our move and I thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person on the list is Ms. Safa Said.
Good evening, my name is Safa Said and I'm thirteen years old. This mosque has been a part of my life since I was two. My family has moved twice within the state of Illinois and both times, one of the major priorities has been how close the mosque is. The mosque to my family and I is a very familiar area. I've been going to the Sunday School since kindergarten. It has introduced me to amazing fellow Muslims that have become some of my very best friends to this day. It also has helped me to improve my social and academic skills. Some of the Muslims at my school, Plum Grove Junior High, aren't lucky enough to have, have a mosque where they can pray, learn and meet fellow Muslims. I feel very blessed to have this mosque in my life. It's not even just a place of worship. We are a community that is as close to each other as a caring and loving family. Through all the trials and tribulations of life, this group of people is always there for one another. I feel truly very lucky and blessed to be a part of this community. It's a very big part of my life and I can't imagine my life without it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person would be Mr. Tanbir Saad.
He wanted to be with me, I'm sorry. I talk a lot, so I pray a stopwatch for myself.
Fair enough.
Dear respected Mayor Rooney, alderman, alderwoman and city officials, I greatly appreciate the opportunity for us all to speak here today. My name is Tanbir Sayad. I live in Rolling Meadows, Chaz Drive, Ward Two. I've been there since September twenty-twelve. I'm a father of three children, of the ages eight, five and two years old. Two of them are elementary school children in Rolling Meadows. And they're also the, they also go to the daily program at ISNS.
It's no disrespect, but someone's doing a little pantomime for me behind you, so.
My profession, I'm a computer professional. I work with Intercontinental Exchange in downtown Chicago, which is a parent company of New York Stock Exchange. No advice for any stock to purchase. And I commute to downtown every day. My commute to downtown every day is three hours every day. And as a parent of the three children, it's critical for me to save the time in my, the rest of the day after I come back to work, to spend the time, to take, to take my children to the daily program every day. I live one mile, less than a mile from ISNS, it helps me tremendously. It also, since I live very close by and don't spend much time after work in traffic and travel or anything, I spend my time volunteering at the ISNS community. I have been, I have served as this youth director and some of the youth are here and I represent them and I work with them. We have been a very good community together, working together for the past two years. Also, I am a, by a licensed real estate broker. As I passed on to you guys, the, some of the notes, the notes from twelve, twenty-twelve, when I purchased my home, some of the criteria that I put in when I was looking for a home. The first criteria that I had, me and my wife sat down and thought about was, what would we give out to our children apart from the life that they get every day is the mosque to be close to. And when I purchased the home at twenty-four, ten, Chaz Drive, ISNS was less than, fulfilled the criteria for me. And as we, as many of them spoke, like Safa, Safa Said spoke, that her parents, when they moved, they purchased a home and Ms. Batul Fatima, when she, when they said they purchased the home, that was their consideration. In the exhibit two that I provide, provided with, provided to you, that I, as a real estate broker, I know the people who purchased the property in Rolling Meadows in past few years. Most of those people have purchased in last five years. Their, their consideration is the same as my consideration to be close to ISNS or any religious community. If ISNS is not the location for me, my family and to these homeowners who have purchased the home in ISNS, the next community is either Schaumburg, which is on Irving Park, which is twenty minutes away, or Des Plaines, the Potter Road, which is another twenty-five, thirty minutes away. So, for these communities to have spent valuable money of their earnings to purchase a home in Rolling Meadows to do, to, it's, it's an invaluable asset to be, ISNS to be where it is and helps them. To the nearest, as I said, To the nearest, as I said, to what do I give back to Rolling Meadows as a community member, a resident of Rolling Meadows? If you see in my, in the Exhibit 2, on the list at the bottom, I've listed some of the services, the businesses that I do business day-to-day add value to Rolling Meadows community. My family dentist is River Dental across the street. My eye specialist is John C. on Kurchhoff Road. My dry cleaner is Plum Grove Dry Cleaners in Rolling Meadows. My gas station is on Euclid Mobile Gas Station, that's where I take my gas for my cars. And my, for me and my wife and my children, our salon is the great clips on Euclid again. So it's, it's, I personally, I say that because I understand the economic burden that you guys are going to have, you're going to consider that. As our attorney LaHalle mentioned, that we are considerate about not damaging or putting any burden on our, on our city. But that's how, it's just me. But I know of the thirty-three families that live in Rolling Meadows, of the few people who have purchased a home in Rolling Meadows, it's a tremendous effort on our part that we want to contribute to stay in the community. As small as Rolling Meadows is, it's a beautiful location for us to do all our errands every day and not to spend much time. Thank you all for the opportunity. I am less than five minutes, I'm going to take off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The final person, no, two more, I suppose, Ms. Lubna Hashim.
Good evening. My name is Lubna Hashim. I am seventeen years old. I live in Hoffman Estates, and I attend Hoffman Estates High School. I've been coming to ISNS Sunday School every Sunday since kindergarten. You guys have heard a lot about this mosque today, and I just want to sum it up and say it's, the mosque is a home. We have a family, very close together. We build off of one another. At Sunday School, I'm given an environment where I can talk about sensitive issues and ask questions. We talk about things that youth are all concerned about, like drugs and depression and online safety. We're given great advice. We're guided to the right way to do things. And constantly, constantly, volunteerism and scholastic excellence is encouraged. I mean, I've received ACT help, homework help, presentation practice, and so much more. It's a great place, and it's personally affected me so much. So please support us in order to ensure that this resource will stay available and, more importantly, accessible, because this mosque is my home. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, the last person on the signing list is Reisa Habib.
I am a Rolling Meadows resident, and currently, I work at the Rolling Meadows Library. You know that. And have been there for fifteen years, receiving an award certificate for my dedicated years of service. I'm here at this meeting to appeal for approval of the building where our only objective is dedication to religious affairs. Please give us a favorable response to our religious, peace-loving appeal, which we promise you will never regret. Thank you, Mayor Rooney, for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all those who have taken the time to come this evening and are not speaking. I'm going to close.
Right, I'm going to close if I can. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing us to go over double time of what you said at the beginning. We really do appreciate that. And I'm just going to, as I said, I'm going to close. You did see there was a large showing of support tonight, but we went out of our way just to have a handful of people address you, and we tried not to have repetition or redundancy and all that. But you can see, obviously, there's a large amount of support here in the books. We gave you thirty-one letters from Rolling Meadows residents of support, twelve local businesses, and twenty-three employees. We also believe that some of the surrounding businesses of the ISNS support this application. So, in closing, you know, I think what you heard tonight is, even that when people, let me say this, when people ask me, or especially when young people ask me, you know, what I do for a living, I say I'm a zoning attorney. And, you know, on its surface, not that young people understand what zoning is, but I tell people I'm a zoning attorney, and on its surface, what we're here before you on is to talk about an application that's before you for zoning. But what we try to convey tonight is really, it's, what's before you is really a question that's much bigger than a zoning question. You heard time and time again about community and everything that this facility and this organization provides, not just to their community, but to the community at large. I'm sure as many of you, if not all of you, as you were sitting here, you were saying that everything that you heard tonight could be said about your church or your synagogue all over the metro area. We're not, I mean, we are talking about a zoning issue, but what we're really talking is about a community. And in my closing slide is to just say this, I think this is a unique opportunity for Rolling Meadows to say to the world, you know, what a welcoming, what a great community it is. I understand your concerns, as you expressed at that last board meeting, council meeting, about the M1 district, but I just think, after you listen to everything you've heard tonight, you know, what a great opportunity it is for the city and what to send a message to everyone else in the whole metro area in the country, you know, what a great place this is, and how you focus on, you know, the community itself and not the nitty-gritty of the M1 district or the C2 district. Thank you again. Again, we're not, we're looking for feedback from you, we're not looking for any formal vote, we understand it's a committee of the whole meeting. We do hope, as you heard from many other speakers tonight, we do hope we get your support ultimately. Thank you.
As Mr. Frank has said, there's no straw pulling necessary on an item like this one simply because there's nothing before the council, but it's an opportunity for folks to express their thoughts with more freedom than at a council meeting, as we explained before the meeting. And they're simply looking for us to provide feedback to them through this public forum. And so, to set the example, I'll start. I happen to consider myself a friend of ISNS, and I hope they consider that as well. I have been present a number of different times for dinners and prayer services and award ceremonies and so forth and so on. So I would offer an either-or from my stance. I happen to support the idea that says M1 is something that in the modern age can be open to places of worship. However, if the council does not choose to go down that road, I'm sorry to say I would not support the second alternative of the zoning ordinance that would say contiguous pieces of property. And I would very gladly support the first alternative. I do believe it's correct to say that the modern world has changed in terms of, well, let's just put it this way, I walk to church every Sunday, and I think I might be the only person who does. And people are coming from all over, and the pedestrian concerns that used to be had, I believe, just aren't what they used to be. As a person of faith, I appreciate all people of faith, and as a person who's a member of a congregation, I would like to see all congregations treated in similar ways. And so I hope that explains why I'm saying I happen to support an either-or, because to say that the M1 can be open to places of worship is a one-size-fits-all solution, which I think we should do. But the alternative of if that doesn't work, the contiguous piece of property, that's a one-size-fits-one solution. And I don't think that's a wise thing to do, and I think the fact that we're kind of here again ten years later, after we did a one-size-fits-one solution here on the council, they don't last for very long. And so, I, that's a bit of a mixed bag, I'm sure. I was not here during the previous discussion for the M1 simply because parent-teacher conferences were being held at the school where I teach. So I didn't really get the chance to make any comments that night. But the first solution, I think, is a fine solution that could still have the ramification of, it would be a special use, which means the council again can look at the considerations that ISNS has presented, that you can't just say, oh, here's a piece of property in the M1, we want it. You would have to show certain things, like I believe they've shown. I know that the industrial drive trouble affects not just ISNS, but some of the neighbors as well, and they would get relief under this proposal too. Hicks Road simply would be a better venue than industrial. So if that's what the council wants to do and say that a special use could be allowed in the M1 district, I think that's a fine idea and a fine resolution to what we're looking for, because this is an area that is not open currently to any Christian church, any Jewish synagogue, any other mosque, or any other place of worship. And so, to say this one can move, but all the others are still kept out, I don't believe that sends the message that the council wants to send, nor that ISNS wants to send. Part of being treated equally is the downside of not getting special treatment. And so, I believe a one-size-fits-all solution is a good one. However, that secondary option, the special use, was closed by the council very shortly after we made this one-size-fits-one solution. So technically, ever since then, ISNS is not a special use, it's what we call a non-conforming use. And, you know, most people are familiar with the term grandfathering something in. Well, a non-conforming use doesn't get to travel with a move. If somebody has a piece of property that has unique characteristics that allow them to do something, if they choose to move house, they don't get to take whatever special permission they had on that property and move it from one to another. That was my problem ten years ago that had to be overcome with the council's vote. And so, I really think that that's not an acceptable solution to me, and I don't think it's one that would stand very well. It might not even last ten years. So I wholeheartedly support the idea that all places of worship in the modern age should be allowed to be in the M1 district. I was mistaken when I passed a place where I knew a fellow who worked, and it's essentially a factory on Quentin Road. I remember going there with our kids and their Pinewood Derby cars to use their industrial scales to get the most accurate measure possible, and today it's a church. And I thought, well, there you go, this is the same kind of thing happening. Technically, it's a commercial district, but you wouldn't know that by looking at it. And everybody who goes there gets there by driving. It's something that you don't have to worry about pedestrian concerns, it's something that Quentin Road is just as good as Hicks Road would be. If that's what we want to do, I think it's a good idea, and I didn't get to say that last time. But if that's not what we want to do, I don't see another path, because it requires special treatment, and I think one-size-fits-one is not the way we should go. I think one-size-fits-all is the way we should go. Those are my thoughts, probably a little extended, sorry about that. Other thoughts from members of the council, knowing that people are kind of looking for feedback, please. Mr. Bajer.
Thank you, and I said this last time they appeared in front of us, but I'm also in support of this. This is almost a retread of the discussion we had about the dance studio, and I said it then. Times have changed. These manufacturing districts, as we all know, manufacturing has fled the country, so they're kind of gutted. And I know at some point, we had, you know, all these far-flung suburbs got, they got sliced and diced into all these zoning districts, but I think we need to be more flexible then, you know, this is a boundary that has to be this, we have to adapt to the times. And if there are tons of storefronts in these and other areas, I think we need to be flexible and allow different uses. As the attorney said, and I think when I talked to him way beforehand, I had mentioned this also, nobody walks anywhere anymore except for yourself, and I ride my bike to church, so that counts somewhat. It has changed, and, you know, I've said it before, I think I mentioned it during the Gallagher thing, that the central planning aspect coming from cities, it, to me, is alarming in some cases. I think, I think it goes too far, and I know we had a big plan for the future that Gallagher latched on and said, oh, look, here's an area that you said you wanted to develop at some point in time when you made this plan years and years ago. But I think, I think we shouldn't let those type of things pigeonhole us into actions that, that make us less flexible. So with that being said, I'm in agreement with you, that first option, second option, certainly not. Thank you.
Further comments from members of the council? Then with no one required to make any comments, I would simply encourage that if you haven't made any, perhaps maybe some form of reaching out to some of the folks to kind of let them know where they might stand. I suspect that some folks might not know right now where they stand, and maybe that's how things can develop. So nothing is closed, everything is open at this point in time. There does have to be an appearance by the Plan Commission, or before the Plan Commission, I should say, as well. And so, I personally happen to wish you luck with the Plan Commission, but asking for comments, you've heard some, and hopefully you'll be able to get some more as we go along the way. Therefore, that'll conclude item number one. Folks are certainly welcome to stay for all the wonderful city business we have, if you're actually interested, but if not, there's no need to stay any longer than now, because we'll move on to the next items on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you for the time, sir. Thank you, everyone, for the time and coming out this evening. So, item number two on the agenda is the Commonwealth Edison Annual Report. And so, Cynthia, you've already been here for quite a while, we appreciate your patience while we went through a very big item, number one. I believe we're going to be switching a PowerPoint as well, so maybe what we'll do is we'll take the opportunity of folks leaving the room and a PowerPoint being switched to just not pollute the airwaves with a bunch of noise, just to kind of do the soft shoe while we wait. Let's just take a temporary pause until we're set up. All right, it looks like the PowerPoint is set up, and I believe we've reached the point where we can trade a camera on it if necessary. And so therefore, Cynthia, welcome back. I know it's, what is this, the third time now that you've been with us?
You know, it's the second, and I thank you for continuing to allow me to come back.
Well, certainly, certainly. And of course, this is an annual occurrence where ComEd prevents, presents, prevents, geez, presents the information that they can over the last twelve-month period that they report on, and so, Ms. Thomas, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Nice to be back again. Okay, so, we're going to give Cynthia this little doohickey here, and we'll get started. So this is our agenda. I'm going to briefly go over 2014 reliability, we're going to talk about some enhancements, I'll give a quick smart meter deployment update. Of course, there's always information here around our communication channels, and then a couple of energy programs I want you to be aware of, I also have some information on that. So the first slide here is reliability through the end of last year. So the top half of the page is SAFI. You guys have heard, I'm sure, these terms before, and we talked about them last year. SAFI is the average number of interruptions per customer, so this is in minutes, if you would. So if you look at the left-hand side, that is going to be storm, and then the right-hand side is non-storm. So as you can see, we're at 135, a little bit over one outage per person for storm 2014, but that's because of the, everyone remembers a storm from 2014. 2014, but that's because of the, everyone remembers a storm from 9/4 of last year. We got hit pretty hard. Uh, about half the outages in Rolling Meadows, um, for, uh, this section was due to storm. You know, so, although it is higher than the year before, it's because of the storm. If you look under non-storm for the average number of, uh, outages per customer, it is, um, about, you know, less than one. So, really, really well, uh, for non-storm. Uh, for this year, we are, um, best on record so far this year is .57 for interruptions so far this year. Let's cross our fingers that we don't have anything big happening, but even so, we really, um, are doing a much better job in terms of restore when we do have an outage, but I did want to mention that we're doing really good so far this year as well. Uh, for the bottom half of the page, that's the average length of outages, and it follows the same pattern. Um, for storm, it's 385 minutes. For non-storm, it was 72, and of course, we did better than the year before when we were out of storm mode. So that is reliability through the end of last year. For interruptions, this gives you a picture of, um, you know, what drove the outages, and I talked, you know, I've said it a few times now, it's been storms, of course, so some of that was tree-related damage. Um, much better with underground, uh, equipment from the previous year. And you can also see, again, at the very end, gives you year-over-year how we did, um, how we did for weather-related incidents. Next up is a circuit map, and I just want to mention here that my team and Barry's team is working on overlaying the wards on top of our circuit map, so that when you see our circuits, they are more meaningful to you. So we hope to have that available here in the next, you know, week or two, but we're still working on that. But this is the map for the city. Distribution automation, um, we had three devices to go in. These are devices that help us bring people up quicker when there is an outage. We can, um, reduce the amount of affected customers, so we, uh, had three devices installed between 2014, 2015. And this is just a snapshot of the cer, you know, picture of the circuits where we had those, uh, distribution automation devices installed. Here is the underground cabling. We had about, um, we replaced about 2,000 feet of cable in 2014, and for 2015, about 600 feet, uh, were completed for 2015. And just like before, I just give you, um, a quick snapshot of where those circuits For trees, we did a lot of our, um, I'm sorry, for poles, we did a lot of our work last year. We replaced, reinforced 160 poles in 2014, and we did eight this year. For trees, um, we trimmed, um, just over 100 miles of, uh, trees, uh, off of our main lines, again, to keep, you know, make sure that when there is a situation, we have kept those trees under control, and we have less outage just because of them. Okay, so that's reliability. For smart meters, um, our plan, um, we have 12,122 meters total to, uh, change out. We changed out 2,158 in 2014. We're on pace to finish just over 8,000 this year, so we're almost done. We have, uh, about 100 that are what we call unable to complete. We had one reason or another where we couldn't get to them, so we have 1,000 of those to still address, and we have about 600 commercials still finished. So about 1,600 total, um, to complete, and we plan to get those done by or before the second quarter of 2016. But we're almost done. Uh, we have had seven refusals, you know, customers who don't want to accept the smart meter. We've talked about that before. Very small number compared to the number of installs we have, but they're there. Um, we've had three folks who didn't give us a reason, uh, one health-related concern, um, one person gave us multiple reasons why they didn't want the meter, and then we had two that didn't, you know, didn't give us a, we categorize them as other, if you would. So it's been seven so far. Power of self, self-service, these are, um, all of the channels in which we communicate with customers. I hope you're all friends on Facebook with us. That's always cool. Um, so we have, you know, Facebook, Twitter, our, um, mobile app, all those applications. We did see a little reduction from 2013 to 2014 in our overall transactions and mobile apps, so we're really keeping an eye on those, and our, um, our internal teams are really making sure that we're pushing information out through those channels, and if customers happen to send us a Facebook message that they're having a problem or a concern, you know, we have a team of folks who actually respond to those, and we send them a private message and get their information, and then we talk them through it one-on-one. But we're actually looking at those interactions every day. And these are all of our, our different channels, and you have this card, I'm sure, on the table somewhere. I think, I think you guys have all of our cards, so you have this information already. Okay. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about the energy savings programs that we have going on right now. I have a couple of cards. I'm going to ask Barry if he can pass around for me, one of each. The first program on there is fairly, um, fairly new. I just sent this information out a few weeks ago. Um, we want to help customers get smart thermostats in their house, and we're looking at trying to, um, you know, help 1 million people by 2020 to get these smart thermostats. It's really, uh, very effective, and with smart meters, it's, you know, it's a perfect marriage, if you would. But they're, they're expensive, so we have a rebate program going on where customers, depending on, and I, I've mentioned $120 rebate here, but if you look at the card, it depends on how they, you know, how they get the thermostat. You know, if you buy it directly, you can get a rebate for 100. If you have a contractor install it, you get $125 rebate, or, um, if you take advantage of the home energy assessment, they come out and they'll also install it for you and give you a discount that way. So one card tells you about the program for thermostats, and the second card tells you about the home energy assessment. Has anybody ever taken advantage of that? No? You really should. I called and, and got an appointment, and they came out to my house, and this is a program that's been around for a little bit, and it's like, you know, you know, I'll get to it, I'll get to it. Well, I finally did it, and it was such a wonderful little program. They have someone come out, she walked through my house with me and told me all the stuff I was doing wrong. She, she changed out, you know, all of my, um, she changed out my showerheads and put aerators in, and all kinds of neat little things, and I've seen a reduction in my energy bill. So, now I'm a big fan, so, and it's absolutely free. At the end, she gives, or they'll give you a report that tells you all the other things that aren't free that you could do. You know, so she made some recommendations for things that I could change and improve, and left that with me to follow up on. Um, but the thermostat is one of the things that, you know, she will, they will change out for you if you choose to do it while they're there. But, um, free to customers and all the little things that she changed in my house were all free to me. I just really want to make sure that we're getting this information out, so I've left, um, some of these cards with Barry, you know, for downstairs, and Mayor, you're probably going to receive multiple secs of these from my office, so you can give them to Barry. Yeah, they're, from the back office, they're sending out lots of them, because we really want to make sure we're pushing the program, so please, um, I would encourage customers to do that, um, so they can save themselves some energy. Any questions or concerns for me?
I wouldn't say question or concern, but, um, since we, since we recently had to, um, update the municipal code, uh, thanks to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, um, one of the things that was in that ordinance that is now being required, and I'm sure you know, is this, uh, the water sense program. And so, the fact that the home energy assessment is also including water sense, um, you know, that might be a great way for folks who don't know what it is, or whatever else, to find out a little bit about it during that process. And so, um, you know, I think that's also a, a kind of a nice come-together of a couple different ideas that have recently come by the council.
It, it is, and that was really, thank you for bringing that up, because when she changed the, the showerheads and had to talk to me about that, because you go, "Well, this isn't, you know, electricity," but it will reduce my water bill, and since I have a teenager who takes 30-minute showers, this is going to be good. Um, but she, and she noticed the difference, too, because you just get, you know, less water, you know, for your 10-minute shower, if you would. But she goes, you know, "So, it doesn't feel quite as, you know, forceful as it did." I'm like, "Really, honey?" Just kind of left it at that. But, thank you, that's a, that's a very good point. But I think, um, homeowners, there's absolutely no cost. Takes a few weeks getting appointments, so hopefully people will take advantage of it.
Mr. Crumstock.
Um, just a few comments, obviously. Um, obviously, ComEd's been doing the annual report per the requirements, and also updating about what they're actually working in the city. And when you look at the DATS, the DATs that Cynthia actually mentioned, you might still see a flicker, but it's doing what it's supposed to be doing. It's going to a different section, and it's trying to make sure that you actually continuously have power, and that's one reason why the DATs are being put throughout the community. The other part is, obviously, we meet with Cynthia at least quarterly, sometimes more than that, but there are a lot of projects that Cynthia is still working with us on. Specifically, there's the streetlight, uh, program that we're working on, and some other items. But again, it's been a very good working relationship with ComEd and Cynthia, and even before Cynthia, with Bonita, as many of you remember. So we do appreciate, we know sometimes we do send a flurry of emails and telephone calls, but everything has always been resolved and in timely manner with Cynthia.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you. Um, just a quick question regarding the smart thermostat. I was just curious if, um, ComEd's having any people go door-to-doors or anything like that, just because I'd like to let residents know, you know, sometimes I, I've actually had someone that came to my door once, not ComEd, but thought it was fishy and contacted the police, so I'd like residents to know that how they would hear about this would not be that someone's going to come knocking on their door and say, "Hey, I'm with ComEd."
You're exactly right.
Yeah, so I just wanted to put that out there.
We don't go door-to-door.
Okay.
Doing anything.
Right.
And if we happen to knock on a resident's door because we're working, we're in full uniform, we have our IDs, and we should never need to come in your house to do work. Um, I also sent something out recently about that, because we've had some, an increase in, um, actually, they're addressing businesses now, asking for payment, you know, that, you know, ComEd has not received payment, and they want them to get credit cards or what have you, or those little gift cards or what have you. So I sent them some information out. We did a news release on that recently, um, so that the villagers can also put that on the website. We do not go door-to-door.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanted people to really hear that.
You're welcome.
You know, another thing, just, uh, some of the comments that we've made, remember that these smart meters are different from what we talked about with our water meter changeouts that we're going to be doing. So again, um, at this point in time, hopefully they'll be done by the time we're getting into certain people's areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mayor. Cynthia, thanks for coming in, filling us in on the new details. Um, I did have one thing that, uh, I wanted to just mention to you. I, I'm really disappointed in the performance of ComEd this year replacing burned-out light bulbs. We've had, uh, a number of streetlights out in my ward for over seven months. They've now been fixed recently because I know you were coming, but, um, it's, I really don't understand why it takes so long. I know there's some underground issues once in a while, but in light of the fact you had such a successful year, it's kind of hard for me to understand why it takes up to seven months to get a light turned back on.
Um, well, thank you for your comment, and I get, um, you know, if I get a call from the city, no matter when it is, we always try our best to, you know, to work if we have to escalate something. And to your point, you're right, there were a couple that were underground issues, and we just have to focus the resources with all of the underground work and the other things. Streetlights, sometimes we do have to push to get the underground work done, because they're getting faults done for customers or businesses, or whatever the case might be. So I'm not going to make excuses for that. Um, all I will say, you know, today we are very clean, and we're doing our very best to stay on top of it, but it's, it's, it has been tough to have the resources to do, to stay on top of streetlights in addition to all the other work that we do, because we have to prioritize it. Nothing should take seven months. Um, so we did have some things that were, you know, we were crossing hairs, we were getting reports from the city. The ones that I have didn't show me the ones that you had, so the last time I was here and met with the team, they gave me everything they had, and I looked at everything I had, and we're finally able to match it up and then make it, you know, make the difference in getting everything fixed.
That's great, and I guess the other thing I'll just add about that, there are a number of, I guess you guys handle about 300, 350 lights for us altogether?
Something like that.
I would dare say that probably 300 of them barely cast a shadow when you're standing underneath them, they're so weak, because the bulbs seem to be so old or underpowered. I know that's a discussion you've had with Fred and Don, and probably Barry.
Yeah, that's a, that's a whole.
But this has been going on, this is not a new situation, you're well aware of it, because we're not the only suburb that has the problem. I just don't understand why ComEd won't take somewhat of an aggressive stance and try to replace those bulbs and put something that's more adequate to get light on the street.
Well, we're working on a, um, a program with you guys now. There was a couple different options, some the city likes, some the city didn't. I know there was a tour at one point, or what have you. Um, if, if they burn out, that's one thing. If the ballast burns out, we can, you know, replace it with the, um, high-pressure sodium. If it's not, then we just replace the bulb, but, um, you know, this is another situation where, you know, we have a lot of villages, and we're probably, um, when we have a program or process, or we have a streetlight program, and I have one now, but it's not one that was conducive to what Rolling Meadows, um, wants to do right now. So we're going to work on the program that we came up with and see about getting everything switched out, so that it's like, it's like you want it.
Okay.
But it is, but it is, it is a program, it's not something that we do unless they're out.
No, I understand that, and that's the reason why I'm even bringing it up, because some of them, I can tell you, on, on the block I live, there's four, there's four lights. On one end, it's very bright, on the other end, it's not very bright.
Understood.
All in the same block. And the other two have been that way for four years, really nice. The other end, they've been that way for 20 years, and they just get weaker and weaker every year. And I know we pay a monthly fee every month, year after year, so you guys do get some income from it. It's not like you're doing it for free.
Understood.
So anything you could do to push it forward, I would really appreciate it. And thanks again for coming out.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other questions for me?
Well then, seeing none, thank you very much for making the annual reports, and if we don't see you before a year from now, we'll see you then.
Absolutely, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
That'll bring us to number three on the open session portion of the agenda, which is the city engineer contract. Uh, I know Mr. Vogt is the one designated to kick this one off. So, Mr. Vogt, the microphone is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get to this item, there was mention made about maps and ward overlays. Public Works staff with, uh, GIS helped, uh, try to put some maps together. They're probably not as good to read as, hopefully, the ones are from ComEd, but I'll give them to Barry. Anybody wants one, yourself.
Much appreciated, thank you.
Until we get the, um, ones from ComEd.
Certainly, certainly.
Here tonight to talk about the, um, upcoming city engineer, uh, contract that, um, expires at the end of 2015. Um, we've got three, uh, representatives from Christopher Burke, our city engineer, here tonight. Gary Roswodowski is our primary day-to-day contact, Jason Soudan, uh, who's been, uh, with us from almost the beginning, if not the beginning, uh, we contact from, for contract issues and, um, other special needs, and then Ryan Lindeman is also here, who primarily has been working on our annual street program, uh, some bridge projects, uh, the Gulf New Wilkie project, anything that involves roadways, state, county, uh, whatever, generally, has been Ryan's for, working for the city for the past several years on behalf of Christopher Burke. Historically, uh, Christopher Burke has been our city engineer since 1998. Um, also historically, we've had two-year contracts, I believe, um, throughout the duration of the, um, relationship. Christopher Burke, um, from my perspective, is very well-versed and very well-known in regards to, um, expertise in stormwater management, environmental engineering, and general municipal engineering services. They've served us well, um, over the years. They've been instrumental in assisting the city, um, in getting a number of state and federal grant fundings for road reconstructions, uh, including, just to mention, New Wilkie Road several years ago, bike paths, stream bank stabilization projects, sidewalks, street lighting, um, the list could do, could go on and on. The city manager, by, um, the city's procedures, is responsible for making the selection of the person or firm to act as city engineer with the approval of city council by resolution with regards to the expenditures of, uh, said contract. And as I mentioned earlier, the current two-year contract expires December 31st, 2015. Wanted to give the council opportunity, if there's any questions with regards to engineering services, I know in the past, particularly with street programs and the like, there's been some questions and discussions about the, um, services, um, and we can certainly open that up, uh, if there are any specific questions to the, um, Burke team that's, that's here today. to the Burke team that's, that's here tonight, if I need some assistance in regards to questions. The one thing I'll point out with regards to the proposal for the renewal of the Christopher Burke Engineering Services for 2016 and 2017, all the terms and conditions are the same with one exception. For, I believe, the last three contracts, we have been utilizing the engineers' rates from 2006. After several years, the city engineer is proposing that we move those to what are known as their 2008 billing rates. We've got the information if somebody wants to look at what the current rates are, but for the purposes of the packet and information that we had earlier, we simply put the 2006 rates that we've been using the last several years side by side with the 2008 rates that are proposing. I think that reasonable with regards to the assistance they've given us in holding the line on their costs over the last several years, that there is a consideration given and would recommend that for a increase to their 2008 billing rate. So, that's the presentation. As I said, we're open to questions or any other information that's desired by the council at this time and would bring a resolution forward at some point before the end of the year to renew the service contract.
Comments or questions from the council? Then, seeing none, is there any objection to a resolution being brought forward before the end of the year for a two-year contract? Hearing no objection, that's direction from the council. Resolution may be brought forward.
Thank you. We will prepare that and bring it to a future meeting. Thank you.
There we go. That's number three, then. Thank you. Moving on to number four, I see Ms. Gallagher getting up and moving forward. So, to kind of tee this one up, this is really gonna be the last committee of the whole where different final changes can be bandied about in the committee of the whole fashion. After tonight, pretty much, if there's any final changes anybody wants to make to the budget, it'll have to be done through the formal amendment process and so forth and so on. So, kind of sort of the last easy chance to make any alterations that anybody might want to propose would be to get a straw vote of the council to include in the budget. So, having said that, Mr. Crumstock, do you have any introductory comments?
No, again, we've been presenting as much as we can on each call, and then this one shows where we sit at this point in time from the past committee of the halls. And obviously, we're here to answer any other questions from, after being teed up, and any other comments that we know about at this point in time.
Okay. Ms. Gallagher?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Crumstock. I'm just gonna add a few points. This is just really a budget recap at this point in time because of the discussions we've taken place so far. And I'll just kind of give a recap and then offer it up to city council for any discussion. So, at this point in time, we've had the budget released in August this year. We've held our city council hearings in terms of the budget and the levy for both the city and the library. Those items have done, been done. The one-on-one meetings have been accomplished with city council. We've had committee of the whole meetings for the budget discussion process, and we've taken the budget through the different ordinances to date. I'm gonna give you a quick recap. I know it's in the packet, but it's important also for folks at home. We've had a few budget changes year to date in terms of the proposed 2016 budget. We've expedited the $40,000 payment from the garage fund to the general fund. The motor fuel tax was increased last week, or November 10th, for one, for one, by one penny, from 3 cents to 4 cents per gallon for the local motor fuel tax, and that is deposited into the local road fund. And the amount is $85,000 additional revenue, which we will update our summary sheets in the adopted budget. And some of the sheets follow this packet. The property tax levy has a line item created for the annual street program. The total amount for the tax levy is dollar change is $597,417, a 4.9% increase year-over-year. And the final item that I'll mention, and again, this is just really a budget recap, because a lot of this has already been in the packet, and then I'll highlight a few other minor items. And number four, in the electronic document, I'm not sure what page number, but it does show an item here where, based on the previous council discussions, $500,000 was used, recommended for use of reserves in the 2015 estimated ending fund balance, transferred over to the general fund, leaving at the end of the 2016 year-end, estimated $7.9 million. And in range for the general fund is 25.6%. Again, as the mayor has mentioned, next week will be the final reading for the tax levy for both the city and the library, and then also the resolution to accept the city's budget and to accept the library's budget as well. And then we have the final readings on the building permit increase and the rental dwelling license next week. And those are all in advance of when we file with Cook County for December. So, really, I just wanted to keep it short, since it's just a quick budget recap, and turn it over to city council.
Then, turning over to city council, I'll start off with information I tried to convey to folks. There's a couple developments that, although there are only two developments, they're, they're fairly significant, and council can decide what we choose to do about them. The first one is one that was mentioned in the packet. This is on electronic page 26, under item number four, about the general fund carryover. That number has gotten significantly rosier since we started this process. And to the tune of approximately $500,000, the council has options, I suppose, in terms of how to allocate those monies. It has been very clearly explained to me by the staff, as is their fiduciary duty, that when it comes to the rating agencies, the folks who watch our books, not from any sort of legal obligation like our auditors, but from a financial standpoint, meaning things like our credit rating are based on it, and therefore our bond, when we go out to sell bonds, the interest rates that we can get and so forth and so on, they're looking for specific things. And specifically, when we have excess reserves, which this is sort of a form of, they're really expecting that places that have pension percentages along the lines of ours, and like most of our neighbors, that money's supposed to be going there. I have previously expressed my opinion that this particular type of surplus should be more residence-centered than pension-centered. And so, quite frankly, we took the entire first $500,000, and I guess I would say ignored the financial doctor's advice and said, "Thanks, Doc, very much, but I'm still gonna continue to eat my red meat," or, or whatever else. Since there's more, and with feedback from the staff on this really is the direction that folks are expecting, I believe it would be a fair thing to do to say, "All right, we took the first 500 for the things that we wanted, specifically roads. The second 500 can be done with what the financial doctor says should be done." That's not something that needs to be done all the way until we're 100% funded, but they're using a threshold of around 70 to 75%, where you have to be that well-funded in your pension funds before they start looking for other things to happen with additional reserves. So, in a way, that kind of takes the, takes the oomph out of the rosier number if the money's just gonna stay. However, the state of Illinois, as we keep bringing up here, is now over five months past their statutory deadline, and quite frankly, they have missed the window to make a property tax freeze be effective for next year. They, Mr. DeJesus?
Where is the, the second 500 on this document?
It's not.
Okay.
Where you would find it, if you wanted to go in and find the, I guess, the page that you would call the pension fund page, you'll see the same numbers in two different places, let's say. So, for example, page, electronic page 29, in your packet, shows just the property tax levy. And under the police pension and fire pension, in the dollar change from the 2014 levy, it lists two numbers, 287,153, and 254,564. Follow me so far?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Now, if we were to show the page in the budget, which everybody could find if we were to switch to the budget document itself, you would see, like, sort of, kind of where that chart is on electronic page 29. On that document, it shows other funding mechanisms down below. And you would see a repeated 287,153, and a repeated 254,564, because we didn't want to take the chance that they were gonna freeze our property taxes, and we put that in our budget as a way to cover the actual aerial payment that we need to make legally speaking in case they froze the taxes. So, wherever that document is in the budget document itself, I promise you, you can find those repeated numbers. I believe we can free those up now, because the state may be darn near omniscient and omnipotent, or omnipotent, but they just can't make 102 counties all break their deadlines for municipalities submitting their property tax levies to their counties. So, it's not on the table anymore. So, what we could do is use those monies and move them out to other purposes. Based on things that I asked the staff, what could we do, I believe the best combination of things that we could do with roughly $500,000 is, in the spirit of what we already did, put another $250,000 toward the road fund. That doesn't really get us extra stuff, but in the funds balance overall summary sheet that you see on electronic page 31, that local road fund still is, in parentheses at the end, showing a negative fund balance at the end of the year. I have already expressed the opinion that I don't think that need, that, I don't think that negative needs to be wiped out. I think anything there considered a negative is simply a general fund contribution to the roads, which I consider perfectly proper. But I also get that I'm not the only one who makes the budget, and there are other folks around the table who have priorities, and we're all supposed to try to get along. And so, by putting 250 toward the local roads, it would make that negative vanish. The only one would be the Tiff Two district that we can't do anything about, and that's not something that anybody can make go away. So, all of those parentheses, except for that one set, would vanish. And that's still roads, that's still residence-centered. $150,000 in round numbers is what we've mentioned before, where due to the state's consolidation of things, they simply ignored the expressed will of the residents of Rolling Meadows through referendum, and they reduced our 911 monies that we collect to the tune of about that much. And the 911 fund has simply had to absorb that. I believe that that's a good use for our money, is to make that fund whole from the state action, which would eat up about 150 in rough terms, which leaves $100,000 left. We've got numerous projects that we keep talking about. We've got numerous maintenance issues that we keep talking about. We've gotta throw some money toward. So, another $100,000 in the building and land fund could be at least some help in terms of some of the immediate work that might need to get done. It's not much of a laundry list, but it seems to hit the things that I believe are most important, and that is my proposal for what to do with these two rather large, but only two items. It's not my decision, it's the council's decision as a whole, so I welcome comments, questions, feedback. What do people think? Mr. Crumstock?
I just would, two points. First thing, if you're doing math, I'll get back to that math in a little bit. But staff's recommendation, and again, in the proposed budget, and also dealing with S&amp;P and Moody's and everybody else, and this will be a little caveat to how you were proposing it, leaving that amount in pensions as the line item shows. But again, maybe just a little advocacy, advocacy, again, as we talk about where we think 2015 is going to be ending up, take that amount that we've been talking about, the original 500,000, making that into a million. So, your overall look for 2015 reduces in the overall look. But again, 2016, we would have contributed those monies in there. So, the line item that you would be looking at would be a million-dollar deduct from that line in 2015, leaving the double amounts in the pensions, because again, they do need to see that we are well under the 70 with mortality rate and with everything else like that. That would really be staff's recommendation to show if you're going to be changing the proposed budget, again, showing all the things that we've talked about, using reserves. And again, reserves are in place right now for certain things. But at the same point in time, when we created this budget, specifically staff and everybody else, as you heard, we're making this in July. So, we're looking at numbers, we're looking at expenses, we're looking at where we, we do not change really any of those once the proposed budget's out there. So, when we give you a quarterly report that shows expenditures lower and revenues higher because of certain building permits and red lights and all those, it's fine to go into that adjustment that we've talked about. We're still over the fund balance reserve in the general fund, so that's why I'm talking about that. I just reiterate, the pensions are more concerning, especially where we see, and also how I've been talking to certain other managers with certain surveillance calls starting and some other stuff. But going back to, if you were going to use, again, a half-million dollars, whatever you want to call it, and what Mayor Rooney has mentioned, if you're looking at the E911 fund, it would actually go for a fund balance from $160,000, roughly rounding, to about $310,000. The local roads, as the Mayor Rooney has stated, the one, negative $195,000 to a positive $54,000. And the other amount would be, obviously, land and building, where we would go from $98,000 to about $198,000. And again, we've talked about each one of those items, but again, staff's recommendation, and I know we've talked about that, is really keep the amount continuously going into pensions, because it really is a big issue. We are well under that 70% mortality rate change really did affect us, too. But at the same point in time, when we've talked about reserves, where we think where we're going to end up, and again, we've always said, we always like after a cafer, and then we know a clean. But at this point in time, I would rather see if you're going to be proposing to change the proposed budget, where we talked about a half-a-million-dollar move in reserves, or what we expect in a reserve, just change that to $1 million and leave all those line items there. So, I know that's a little long-winded, but there's a comment.
Well, it did give me the opportunity to locate quickly the first source, if anybody really wants to. If you want to open up the 2016 proposed budget document that's loaded on everybody's computer, if you go to electronic page 69, you'll be able to find one instance of what I'm talking about, about that 287,153 and 254,564, that kind of transfer to police pension fund and transfer to fire pension fund that is already built in the budget. That's where you can see that second set of numbers we were referring to. So, Mr. Cannon?
So, I guess, I'll direct us to Tom and Barry. I'm a little, I'm a little bit confused. I don't think a lot confused, but I just want to confirm. So, what, the proposal you're making is basically just reaffirming what Barry started with, okay?
Correct.
Because we're not, we're not talking about brand-new money in the sense that, so we're just, when he proposed a budget to us on an individual basis, he talked about making an extra contribution. So, we're just confirming that tonight, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
That is correct.
Yeah, anybody at home, we're still on our proposed, because the property tax increase, majority of it is the pension amount. So, anybody at home, we're still making our contribution plus more per the council. There was just an additional amount, the second additional amount that we're talking about, to, again, try moving that bar... about, to again, try moving that bar higher.
When I first read it, I thought it was yet another 500,000, so I was pretty good. So I was a little bit, I was like, ooh.
It's, it's not the easiest thing in the world, it is a fairly complicated thing, and as I tried to allude to in writing, staff's preference, if this is going to go through, if you follow the way I present it, there really should be this do-si-do of a triangle, and staff is saying, just leave it simple, just leave it where it is and just say, here's where it's going, and don't worry about the technicality of, well, this has to move here and this has to move here, and therefore this has to move here. The numbers will still work out the same, and so I have no objection to keeping it simple, especially since it's already complicated. Further comments or questions? Mr. Diastis?
I think I'd have to agree with what you've said, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to put more money towards the pensions.
Quite frankly, me neither, I'm with you.
Okay, and this council had an option, and still has the option, to have it done by the year 2040, and has decided to do it seven years earlier. I think that's enough of an indication that the council is serious about paying and getting this thing taken care of, that we don't have to put more in there now, regardless of who tells us or who wants to. So I am with you, let's put more money towards roads. I don't understand why we're putting more towards 911, because it's already positive at the end of the year, and you said it was negative, so I'm seeing that-
I did not say that, sir.
Okay.
I never said 911 was negative.
Okay, so-
What I said was, the state poured approximately 130 grand out of it. That money is, the 911 fund is not an annual fund, it's, it's more of a multi-year fund, and there are things that we know we're going to need, and to take it out this year and not do it next year, I, I think is a smart thing to keep it where we thought it was going to be all along.
For the time being, I will, I would live with the 250, 150, and 100. I might lean more towards 350 in the roads, and not so much in projects, building and land fund, but I absolutely would be absolutely against putting more money into those pensions. We're already doing more than we are legally required to do by paying it off by 2033, as opposed to the option that we had to do it by 2040.
I think that's a fair point, and I wish I felt that I had the freedom to join you in that sentiment. Mr. Banger?
Thank you. I agree with Alderman, Diastis, and I know what Barry is saying, we could keep shoveling more money onto pensions, which, which would take some of the pressure off of us in, in the next, you know, several years, but it's also nice to shovel more money towards streets, which is one of the suggestions here, which I completely agree with. I'll also agree with Alderman, Diastis, in terms of that 100,000 toward, toward building and land could also go towards streets if, if I had my druthers. Thank you.
That is certainly an option, and in a case like that, that could yield 100,000 more actual dollars instead of just making a negative go away, and if we wanted to say it had a zero balance, it could be 150. Certainly no problem with that at all, it's just not what I brought forward based on the options they gave me, but it's certainly a legitimate option. Further comments or questions? Mr. Veenbass?
I'm in support of this too, all for the putting the extra money into the road fund, and I totally understand the 911 fund, City of Chicago's got a bigger problem than we do, but recognizing what's going on with the state right now, we probably should do the right thing and take care of that fund.
Further comments or questions? Seeing no further comments or questions, then maybe we should decide this tonight, while we can still do it by straw poll. The chair is open to any discussion about specifically the 100,000 to go to the building and land fund being transferred over to the road fund instead. We have heard two voices in support. Are there others, are there questions, are there voices against? Mr. Cannon?
I think we should put it into the road, into the building fund. Obviously, I would like to get more stuff for roads, but I'd like to remind people that we're having a pretty serious discussion about building two new fire stations sooner than later. Now, we're having a company work on it right now. I would think reasonable people might think that we might come to some conclusion next year, and there's plenty of issues we have with maintenance right now that I'm sure public works could use every dime we give them to help maintain the buildings we own already. So I think the 100,000 there is not bad. I understand the comments about streets, I don't particularly agree with them. In light of doing one or the other, I think we have to be a little bit prudent with the buildings too. Thank you.
Further comments or questions on this item? Mr. Diastis?
I like moving it to, to the roads. I think that's more important. If and when we do fire stations, that will be a bond issue, so 100,000 stuck in building and land is not going to do us any good, and I think we've already earmarked money for certain repairs for public works, which I've already suggested we just tear it down this year. So I disagree with my, my colleague, and I'd move 350 to roads and 150 to 911.
Fair enough. To be fair to Mr. Cannon's comments, though, it's not just old public works, it's, it's public works in general. The building and land fund can go to many different things, and I, I think he was making a reference to public works in general rather than just the old public works building. I don't mean to speak for you, but-
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, I mean, we had a proposal we used to, we used to prove the other day for heating and air conditioning, we know that that's going to be a lot of money.
Correct.
And I don't think, and I don't think we have that budget right now.
It's that kind of thing that could also be considered.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to give due where it's, trying to give credit where credit is due. Further comments or questions on this particular issue? Ms. Majakis?
I just put my two cents and say I support what Alderman Cannon's saying, and yourself the 100,000 into the building and land.
The building and land, okay. So now I've heard two on each side. Anybody else?
It's a fight.
Mr. Pran?
I'll throw in Mr. Cannon on this one.
All right.
You're going to throw him in?
We might not, we, we might not have a straw poll necessary, I don't know, we'll have to find out.
Pressure's on you.
Mr. Veenbass?
I'll put it in the roads.
Well, Mr. Judd-
Here we go.
Do you have any comments on this issue, sir?
You're awful quiet tonight.
All right, well, then let's do a straw poll.
Be afraid.
I'll see if I can get them off the dime that way. Those in favor of saying that the local road fund should receive $350,000 instead of $250,000, please signify by raising your hand. Those in favor of saying that the local road fund should get 250,000 and the building and land fund should get 100,000, please signify by raising your hand. That is a three-to-three tie. The chair's proposal was for the 250 and one. I certainly think the 350 is a perfectly valid option, but since it was my proposal, I'm going to say let's leave it there for now. The gentlemen know that the amendment process is still open to them. If you can find somebody who's willing to change their mind, you can get a majority of the council. Mr. Diastis?
Will this come before the council for a vote?
Well, that was what I was just saying, yeah. The amendment process is still open.
And when it comes before the council for a vote, which way is it going to be presented?
Well, the direction being given this evening is the chair's original proposal. That's why we said the amendment process is open to you.
Why would it be that way and not the other way?
Because tie goes to the runner?
Ah, no, it doesn't all the time. Because, because if, if it's presented that way and it's a three-to-three tie, assuming somebody doesn't vote.
But there's no option not to vote when it comes to something like the budget. Oh, well, all right, all right. I see what you're saying, on an amendment, that process can still happen. All right, then?
I just want to-
I've, I've decided that I wrote in my memo, this is supposed to be a team effort, so I'll put my money where my mouth is, and I'll say, you can have it written your way, and if anybody wants to change it back, they can. In other words, what I'm saying is, I changed my tie-breaking vote to go with the road fund, since there was no direction from the council, and it's still a perfectly fair game to try to amend it back. The valid point is that it still could end up as a tie. I'm trying to make this whole thing a team effort. I think people have to give on both sides. I'll extend my hand and say, you can have it written as 350 to the road fund, and amendments can still be made. I personally would support either option, but the 250, 100 was mine, so I would be in support of any amendment to change it back, but if this is a team effort, it's a team effort, so I'm giving on one side, I'll give on the other as well. Mr. Cannon?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, Mr. Vogt?
Certainly.
Fred, I was wondering, do we have money right now put aside for the ventilation program we're going to get into with this building for next year? Do we have money that's actually set aside or is that going to come out of maintenance?
Well, there's funds in the proposed budget for 2016 for this building.
That's what, that's what I'm asking, I didn't look through, so I don't know the answer is, do we have money set aside to do something major here?
I don't recall what the number is, but yes, as part of putting that together, well, well, it's still to be determined what we find in terms of major versus minor, but in the proposed budget, there's phase one as reference for City Hall HVAC controls of $150,000.
Okay, so we have it covered.
So you're saying it's the same as estimated for-
Well, I, I guess, yeah, I guess we're-
Go ahead.
Okay. I don't mean to interrupt, but within the capital plan, it was a phased project, so it was two years, 2016 would be phase one, and then 2017 would be phase two, it's 150,000 for '16 and 150,000 for '17, is how it was proposed in the capital plan, if I, if I recall correctly.
Which section rose next summer? Who doesn't get it?
This all would be dependent on all of the services.
To be determined by the professionals, I'll leave it that way in terms of-
Okay, great, thank you.
Cost effectiveness and the like.
Well, and I think Mr. Cannon's question is partly material and partly because he's always looking for the warmest part of the building, I think, I think that's part of it too.
Next to the hottest person here.
Oh, thank you!
A slightly different definition, maybe. So I, I think in fairness, then, Mr. Vogt, could I ask, I know that the timeframe is a little tight, but since it's a proposal and since folks might want to make amendments to possibly change, could you prepare for us, perhaps in the form of a staff report, if there's 100,000 more dollars, then there is no more negative to solve, that's 100,000 additional dollars to go to roads, what would you spend it on? And then that way, people can decide, $100,000 go as far enough for me to say I want it to go there, or it doesn't seem like to be a lot of bang for the buck for me, so I'd rather to have it go building and land. I think that's a fair piece of information to ask for. Is that something you could do?
Plenty of opportunities to select a combination of roads, and we'll look at that based on needs, based on ratings, based on locations, with the anticipation that it would put it in one contract as opposed to two.
Then is there any objection from the council? If you take a look at the sheet that talks about the, the possible negative without this maneuver being made, as Mr. Crumstock pointed out, it would go from being a negative to a positive 50. It seems to me that in this particular fund, since what we're talking about is an annual street program that we do every year, so it is more of an annual fund than the building and land fund, there's not really a need to have any, it could be zero if we wanted it to be, and so maybe the number we should play with is 150 to get a little bit more bang for the buck if that's the way it's going to go. Is there any objection to giving direction for what would you do with 100 and what would you do with 150?
No, that's a good idea.
All right, let's try that. Mr. Vogt, have I put too much work on your plate, or is that 50,000 as easy as I think it might be to figure out where it would go?
We can do whatever council and yourself direct.
I appreciate that. Are there other kind of last shot at committee of the whole changes without formal amendments? Mr. Crumstock, I don't think you have any, do you?
No, no, but I just have a clarification question.
Okay, well, you can always ask me later. Mr. Crumstock?
So the clarification is, are we going back to the 287, 153, and the 254 line item? Because if it is, then there's still-
Those are staying.
So those are staying, so it's the other half a million that we talked about?
Correct.
I just want to clarify, that's why-
And that could be done after, when the council, we're trying to keep the ball rolling here, we don't need to stay here any later than necessary. Mr. Pran, you had something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I waited till the end, till we shook it all out. When we put this budget together in July, we only had two bargaining agents, but because of actions of the council and actions of our employees, we now have four bargaining units, and so as a result, we're going to have double the legal fees and staff time, plus the fact, because of what was pushed forward, this council will not have any direct input in that contract, and I clarify that because they will not be, if you recall, over the last five years, the council could say, well, you're going to have a zero increase or a one increase, or, well, this time around, no one here will have a direct input. It will be more indirect, because it'll be what, the legal fees, or our legal team will be negotiating with the unions, since we now have four unions instead of two, and as a result, we don't know what those fees are going to be, plus we have no way of knowing what's going on with the negotiations, because it'll be brought to us so, who do I direct that to, is, what contingency fund do we put together for that, I guess?
Mr. Crumstock?
The only contingency would dipping into reserves if line item goes over, but at this point in time, that's where it would sit, because again, how the July numbers were put in, we estimated expenses, and again, typically what we try doing is, we will try during the budget to hold, but if it's not, then the reserves are picking up that expenditure line.
Mr. Pran, is that a sufficient answer for this evening?
Thank you.
Anybody else want to try to make any changes through the committee of the whole format rather than through amendments? Then is there any further discussion on the budget at all this evening? Then seeing none, that concludes item number four on the agenda, without objection, we'll adjourn. Hearing no objection, this committee of the whole meeting is adjourned.